Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for attending tonight's zoning board planning meeting. All items presented during this portion of the meeting will be represented at a future board meeting of commissioners as a public hearing. I'm not sure exactly when that date is. Ms. Donegan, would you be able to tell us?
Sensitively, the items tonight will be heard on August 2nd, Board of Commissioners.
August 2nd. They'll be in front of the Board of Commissioners. So, we're going to have a call to order and an invocation and a pledge, so we would like everybody to stand. I'm going to ask Mr. Ryan Thompson if he'll give us the invocation.
Sure, thank you. Do you have my father give this board wisdom with the decisions that are in front of us tonight to make good decisions for the future growth of our county? And be with those that are serving us, both domestic and abroad. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the great work of which we stand, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business... Let me ask you this. Are there any changes to our agenda, Ms. Donegan?
There's no changes to the agenda.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the agenda. I make a motion to approve by Mr. Zipper. I have a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on our agenda is last month's minutes. Are there any changes or corrections that we need to make? Anybody have any corrections that they'd like to submit? If not, I'll call for a motion. I have a motion to approve by Mr. Smith. I have a second. Second in favor. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, so all items presented during this portion of the meeting presented as a future board with the public hearing with commissioners on August 2nd. We've already seen one over that. As the first item on tonight's agenda is Gloria Shepherd requests to rezone two of 45 plus or minus acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the creation of a home site. This property is located at 2316. That's in the 1st district. Is Gloria Shepherd here, please? Ms. Shepherd, would you come forward, please? Tonight's meeting is recorded, so I would ask everybody to state their name into the mic when they come up to the podium and sign their name on that.
Yes, Shepherd.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd, would you tell us a little bit about what your intentions are with this property?
I want to... Two acres of my 45 to give to my home. He'll be right close to me. He can help when I get older.
Children of the Jewish age.
That's right. Little chickens on one piece of property.
Any questions of the Board? This could be one... Let me see if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak up for or against your petition. If you just have a seat. Is anyone making a comment for or against this petition? Questions or questions? I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion.
I've got a motion to approve by Thompson. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Zipper. All in favor? Aye. Ms. Shepherd.
Thank you.
The item on tonight's agenda is Etheridge Dasher requests to rezone two acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow future creation with an adjacent parcel located at 4224 Highway 17 South. This is the 1st district. Is Etheridge here? Would we like to table this until Mr. Dasher shows up, or do we want to hear it? It's a simple little... Pretty simple combination. Okay, does anyone want to speak up for or against this petition? Any questions or comments from the Board?
Seems straightforward.
Okay, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Mr. Ryan. Second by Mr. Zipper. All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously. The item on this evening's agenda is a public hearing. Incorporated has to rezone 88 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for the creation of a home site located 295 North Magnolia. This is in the 1st district. Is Gordon or is TPHC here to speak up for this petition, for this request? No. Same little scenario, pretty simple.
Yeah, it's very simple.
Would anyone like to speak for or against? Any questions or comments from the Board? I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion for approval. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith. Motion carries unanimously. Doesn't always go this fast, ladies and gentlemen. Public hearing number four is Lynn Jean Grimes requests to rezone 2.33 acres of the 9.43 acres from AR1 to AR2. It's the separation of a home site located at 1411 Goshen Road. That's in the 2nd district. Is any... Is Mr... I mean, is Lynn Grimes... Would you come forward? Could you state your name?
My name's Lynn Grimes.
Thank you, Ms. Grimes. Do you have anything that you want to tell us or add to this request?
No. Rezoned to build a new house. Right.
Anything to say for or against that? For or against Ms. Grimes's petition? I'll call for a motion then.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Zipper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Thompson. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Don't forget to come back August 2nd. Item number five. Excuse me for not pronouncing that correctly. Adod Rayana Dotson. Helen, per request to rezone one point of 20.18 acres from AR1 to AR2, allow for the creation of a home site 96 Egypt Ardmore Road. This is in the 3rd district. Is Bobby Dunn or Ambria here? It's unusual. Okay. Questions or concerns? Does anyone in the audience have some... Any questions or concerns about this petition? Okay, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I've got a motion for Zipper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Brad Smith. All in favor? Motion carries by all. Madam, you came in a little... Gone through five petitions now. What's your name?
David Wood.
So, we haven't called you. Okay. All right. The evening's agenda is Franklin and Galen Smith request to rezone 12.10 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for a three-lot subdivision located at 200 Clooney Road. This is in the 3rd district. Is Franklin and Galen here? Please come forward.
Galen Smith.
You're Galen?
Yep.
And this is your daughter?
Yes, sir.
Hello, Ms. Smith. You're going... Do we have access?
Yes. Yes.
A frontage.
Okay, so that access road is...
119.
Clooney and... Okay. Okay. Ask Galen and his mother?
Daughter.
All right, let me see if anyone has any questions. Does anyone have anything to add or questions or concerns about this petition?
I do.
Come forward, sir.
My name is Mike Phillips. I live at 271... Was the three lots where they... Or is it Old Dixie?
The frontage is on Cloo Shoney.
Well, there's one lot that's on both, right? It's the corner. And it's only on Cloo Shoney. And then the other is off Old Dixie.
Okay. My wife built that home 31 years ago. Effingham County. Farmer. They scraped the money to buy that, the initial plot of that home. She's been there ever since. I've only been... And she's... It's gone on, it's gone on on Dixie with the developments that have gone in there. I know three homes isn't... Now, what it is, is it's not followed that she followed when she built her. Point on that. And when I look toward the future, we're going to start... If we choose... The people that are there are looking for neighbors that are at arms length. That's why they're... And I think somebody coming up looking at their home, if they see three homes across... That was definitely affect the pricing of my home if I ever chose... 61 on the corner. They'll have reservations only because they're not having their... They're not saying... Agricultural for a reason. And I'd cut that way in that area. Preserves my property values a little bit more, I think. And I think I have a right as much as to do that as somebody else would on changing the rules so they could put more homes than...
I understand. Mr. Phillips, where is your lot on Old Dixie Highway?
Cloo Shoney, across the street. The 18-plus acres are across the street.
Oh, okay. So, you'll have two, three-acre lots facing your property.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay.
So, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is anyone else would like... Any questions or concerns? Thanks for your input, Mr. Phillips. I'm going to call for a motion. Let me ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion to approve. Do I have a second? I've got a second by Mr. Zipper. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. This will be heard at August 2nd by the commissioners. The next item on this evening's agenda is item number seven, and that is Beverly Sap requests to rezone 8.54 acres from AR2 to AR1 to allow for a second family member located at 121 Needle Point. That's in the 4th district. Is Beverly Sap here this evening? Good evening, Ms. Sap.
Hi, I'm Beverly Sap.
That zoning request backed on...
Yes, that is correct. It was thought, if I may, that it would be more appropriate size within the subdivision. The provisioned family... You subdivide the property within the subdivision.
All right, so it's meant to be AR1? Changed to AR1?
The... AR2 all around.
Oh, okay.
But it is to be AR1, so sort of maintain the size of the lot, which is to accomplish.
So, we're using provision?
For an immediate family member in AR1, yes.
And just wanted to make sure you're clear that that means you couldn't subdivide it and sell it in the future.
Mom has dementia, so that's why.
So, how large is that second lot going to be?
There won't be one. And she's going to use...
Be one. They're making it AR1.
One to allow for two.
Got it, got it, got it, got it, got it. AR2 doesn't allow for two dwellings on one site. Is that correct? All right, Ms. Sap, let's see what the... Anyone in the audience... Concern... Question or concern? Okay, gentlemen, I'm going to call for a motion then. Got a motion to approve with all lack of recommendations by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Zipper. All in favor? Carries unanimously. This will be heard again on August 2nd. Thank you. Item number eight is hearing David Dees, agent for Effingham County Industrial Development Authority, requests to rezone 6.96 acres from B2 to B3, the development of a fueling station and convenience store located on Old River Road. This is the 1st district. Is David Smith here this evening?
Hello.
Smith? Katie, can you tell us a little bit about this?
Going to my colleague Chelsea over here.
Chelsea, can you tell us?
This will be a rezone of B2 to B3. The DR was submitted for this proposed. We are waiting for that report to come back. Again, this would be Old River Road, not a truck. It is close to I-16, and we would require a traffic study performed for that.
Very good. Didn't we have a thing about two months ago, about maybe three months ago, about a piece of property that was looking to be a fueling station? We did hear that? Huh. Subdivision right by that, I think. That was a big issue. All right, Mr. Smith, can you tell us a little bit about what's going to happen here?
Sure. Just proposing that C-store at the corner of Savannah Portside International Parkway and Old River Road. Basically, as...
Is it pulled up?
As you see, it would be a C-store with canopy of eight positions, as well as a canopy for fueling positions.
So, what portion of the uses and the triggers that need to change from one commercial? Is it just the truck fueling portion? I guess that's a question the staffs are asking.
Hello, I'm Rusty Windsor with Kimmel Horn. The current use is allowed within a B2, but the staff recommended us to look at converting it to a B3 to align with the future plan of multi-use in this area.
I know that's a hot element right along that corridor. Okay, well, let's see what we hear from the public at large. Anyone have any questions or concerns?
My name is Richard Sapp. I'm probably the most affected person by this development because it'll be my neighbor, if you could call him such. So, I have a couple of... Zoned B to begin with. Since I'm an adjacent property owner, I would think owned would have got a notice.
I'll find out for you. Katie, when was this thing rezoned or... Would you?
To you?
I do not.
This minute, I will find out for you.
Seem to have things that get developed down there that was about a rezoning, like the BP across the street. I was just curious how this happened. Second question would be, who enforces... If you make a recommendation in...
So, we make a recommendation to rezoning, are the counties to enforce?
Who? And they do have road enforcement. You know, people come out, make sure that, you know...
So, the industrial development that's there now, the whole... There was a... And about... And followed. So, what's going to guarantee... You say tonight is going to be...
All we're knowing tonight is the zone, no site plan, or... B2 to B3 going this afternoon.
Is there going to be trucks...
We're not approved.
Just a couple of hundred feet from my bedroom.
We're just zoning any building.
No sketch plan tonight about what's going to... If it does, it's first got to become even put on the drawing board. And then, when it does come on the drawing board, it'll come before this end, and then there'll be... For, you know... Say, they're going to have trucks there all night. What are they going to have there, you know? Right now, they're just saying we need to move it to a different type of zone...
It really doesn't... Why you would rezone it and then go back, but, you know, it's a dangerous road. It's an S curve. You already got this entrance for those warehouses. You got people... I can't even get out in the driveway in the morning to go to work. There's so much traffic. And we're going to add another thing. Parkers is pretty popular, so it'll be full, I'm sure, you know?
That's what Katie was saying earlier, too. There would have to be a traffic study before they can get approval.
Yeah, they did one for the IDA, too, and they passed that right on through, so... And while they were building the entrance, some lady got killed there. So, you know, I don't think that does much good. My kids couldn't even get on the school bus there because they said it was too dangerous to stop the school bus. And that was... My kids are grown.
And your property is right to the left of that.
Right next to it.
Yep, I see it.
I got the golden goose egg. So, then it's going to come back again, and you're going to decide what kind of buildings going to be put on there and what's going to be done there. Is that what you're telling me?
They have to submit a sketch plan for the... And a proposal for the Board to hear on that, too.
And then it goes before the county elected officials for them to decide that's going to... Tonight is just kind of a screening steering committee to see if it, you know, meets the codes, the ordinances.
And that's why y'all are here tonight, to voice your opinion on that, too. So, we're listening to you.
So, it's to meet, to find out what it meets the codes?
Yeah. Does that property warrant that code? I mean, can you put a B3 on that property?
So, what are they going to do with the wetlands on the far... On the south end of it? They going to cover those over, or that's something for another?
No, the Corps of Engineers is involved. There's a lot of people involved in all of this. There's health departments and Corps of Engineers, and they're not going to be able to just blatantly, you know, violate.
At some point, we got to stop developing in this county and start fixing roads and doing things that... The infrastructure that we need. You know, we just building and building and piling and piling, and my taxes keep going up, and I'm paying less for roads than I am for the IDA. Why am I funding the Industrial Development Authority, and we can't fix the roads? Don't make no sense. We got to stop somewhere.
I'm with you on that 100%.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Sapp.
Mr. Vice Chair, just for the gentleman's information, this property was... It was 49.37 acres, partially zoned I1, partially zoned B2 in 2007, to allow for warehousing in I1 and retail in B2. So, since 2007, the intention of that site has been for commercial development.
Can you tell me who rezoned it?
That would be Philip McCorkle was the applicant on behalf of the owners, Carrie D. English and Paula W. English.
Interesting. Never got a notice.
And you said that was 2007?
Yes, sir.
Quite some time ago. Good evening, sir.
I'm Hubert Sapp, and I fully understand all of the rules and regulations. I sat on the Board of Commissioners for 12 years. And what was put in place has not been followed. They changed everything that pops up. So, we're going to rezone this to B3 and then come back. So we're gonna rezone this to B3 and then come back with a plan on what they can do. Is that the way it's gonna work?
That's what I understand is gonna happen.
Well, I can tell you I am thoroughly opposed to any of it being rezoned. We've got trucks down there. The IDA goes on about drawing jobs. What they put in is warehouses. Put in a cold storage. Go down there every morning and see what comes in for help. They bus them in. So the local people are not benefiting, it's a burden to me. The trucks cannot get signs down there directing them to where they go. And they can't speak English, they'll pull a phone out and go to pointing Walmart, Walmart. Go all through the subdivisions, back in my driveway, trying to turn around. And I, I'm tired of it, I've been there. My family has been on that property since 1941. I have been on it since, for 61 years. I've raised four young'uns on it, and like he said, that, his young'uns could not get on the school bus back then, and they all grown and out because of it being dangerous. They have not made road improvements, they have not done what they were supposed to do. And I am totally opposed to it.
Thank you, Mr. Sapp.
Alright.
Duly noted. Would anyone else like to speak up for or against this petition?
Good morning, or, sorry, good evening, my name is Joseph Barrick. I am a, a resident of Meldrum, just right around the corner of this, uh, proposed zoning change. I was also here during the, the last truck stop that I was opposed, and for several reasons. Granted, my, my reason is nowhere comes close to, to Mr. Sapp and his family, which, which, you know, I, I can empathize with that. But, you know, you talked about rezoning, and then figuring out what you can put on there. That's kinda like, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? And, and if opposing the zoning opposes a truck stop, then I oppose the rezoning. I haven't been a lifelong resident of Effingham County, only been for six years, and I love it. And, uh, you know, just sitting in here and a couple of these meetings that I've been to, you know, why, why do people move to Effingham County? Why is the population growing so much? Because people don't wanna live in Chatham County. That's fine that Effingham County is Chatham County's bedroom, because people want peace, they want quiet, they want good schools, they want low crime. And a lot of this development is bringing all that stuff. You know, you look at the, the future land development, Effingham, and I get it, we gotta grow, we gotta produce jobs for all the people that are, that are going there. But at the same time, we gotta remember what makes Effingham Effingham, and what people wanna move there for. Aside from the dangerous, uh, rogue, road, um, that would, would, is already there, and then you wanna invite trucks. Old River Road is not a county truck route. Uh, you can, you can say that, hey, it's close to I-16, and I understand that, but it's still not a county truck route. And, and anyone who says that it will not invite more trucks down that road is, is naive, or has an, an ulterior motive. So as many times I can come here and, and, and oppose that, anything really within five miles of my house that's gonna, gonna bring any more things, uh, that, that could impact my family or how I raise my children, I'm gonna be here and I'm gonna oppose it if I have the time. So that's why I oppose, uh, this, this zoning, and thank you for your time, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Barrick.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
I'm in Philly Conyers. I live at 1279 Old River Road, I'm neighbors with Mr. Sapp, a couple houses down. Got three children that live next door that I'm growing fond of, and it's very dangerous for them to this day to get on that school bus that they're talking about. But he put it better than anybody, the rezoning is, okay, we're gonna rezone it, then we'll do whatever we want to with it, whether it's parkers or not, and believe you me, I'm a big customer of parkers, but I don't want him down the street from me, for multiple reasons. Y'all done it, stopped one, and I'm not sure for the reasons why we were at that meeting as well, but I found out about this one by accident. You, you don't make the public aware that well, and I'm not saying this to you, gentlemen, I don't know who, whose job that is, but the signs are hidden pretty good. With all the, I was told a church is going to where a truck stop is now, or a trucking company. That was supposed to be a church when I bought my home. Now down the street from it, there's a, God knows what's going in it, the land's cleared. But I oppose the rezoning, as the other gentleman have, and so I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Conyers. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
I've got a few follow-up questions for staff, specifically.
Okay.
So there's a DRI that's actively being
Yes.
We don't have that recommendation or the report back?
We have not received that yet, no.
Okay. And then, I guess, help, and, and we may have to ask the applicant back up, help me understand exactly why they're going, requesting the rezoning then? Because the answer I heard, it sounded like they didn't need the rezoning to do what they were proposing to do, and that doesn't, I don't follow that exactly.
What's to stop them from just building, um, on a B2? Already zoned B2?
Nothing, I'll hold on. Give me just a moment, if, if you would, if you wanna go ahead and cover.
Um, I think, um, you know, one of, one of the, the reasons, um, may be that this project is consistent with the county future land use map, um, which designates the area as mixed use, um, and, uh, you know, these characteristics are defined at the discretion of the community, so, um, you know, this is something that is, um, you know, consistent with the, with the future land use map, so. I know that may be one reason that we wanted to.
Okay. That's still from a DRI standpoint, we're, we're waiting on that.
We're waiting on that, yes.
Did you have another question?
Well, I mean, I'll just say that, use-wise, I mean, I, I know that area, I mean, I think it's a use that I'm surprised to hear the request for a rezoning if they argue build a use, I, I, like I said, I don't, I don't follow that, I need to have a understanding of that, because we're not here one application, we are opening it up to other B3 uses, you know, not just what we've seen here, right? Anything in B3 could be there, so I just wanted to understand exactly, exactly why the B2 to B3 was needed. And then I, I've, I gotta do some thinking about the DRI aspect of it.
One I need to ask you one quick. How many of y'all would like to sit outside of a truck running all night long?
Not me.
And that's, that's what'll be happening.
It's already happening.
I've got a son-in-law that drives. They're in Oklahoma right now. They can't deliver until Tuesday, get unloaded, so they sitting there with their truck running the whole time. So how would you like that in your yard? Not just one, but a gang of trucks.
Why do they do that, Mr. Sapp? I mean, has he got a refrigerated truck that he has to have electricity?
He got to have air and heat.
So it's for the driver comfort?
Correct. But if you go to these truck stops and just pull in and see what's going on? And see if you'd like that in your bedroom?
Go down there and look right now, they parked on the side of Old River Road.
Yeah, they parked on the side of the road now. And Sheriff's Department don't do anything about it, so there's no enforcement. And this is just open, it wide open.
And so instead of going into the warehouse district, they're parking on Old River Road?
Yep. Yes.
What's, what's precluding them from going into the warehouse area? They have blocked gates?
Who knows, but they parking there now every day. Sitting there and run the truck.
Y'all need to, y'all need to make a trip down there and look at things. And I I should have raised sand when they started building the BP station, because that was grandfathered in, that store that was there, that was Schuman's store. It was grandfathered in, and for anything else to be done, they were supposed to go back to rezoning, never happened. It never happened. And the neighbors through there said it has done nothing but hell-hack them, has ruined their way of life.
Where is that BP station?
They put a sound wall up by that BP station?
Oh, wide open.
It's wide open. You can hear all that in the house. And that's, that's what we've been dealing with. And the truck traffic is just unreal. They tearing up the roads, and just like he said earlier, I get my, uh, you can look at your assessment, tax assessment. Look at what goes to the roads and look what's going to the IDA. In fact, the IDA used to have to turn in a budget. Well, they don't do that anymore. When I was sitting on the board, they filed a lawsuit against the county commissioners and carried it to court. And the state had put in place that they could collect two meals. So that's what they collect. They had condemnation rights, and they condemned all that property down there, until they condemned it from IP. Might've been Union Camp at the time. And they were big enough to go back to the state and had the condemnation took away from the IDA. But the county commissioners had no control over the IDA. Once they're turned loose, they wide open, do whatever. They collecting that money, and they are funding these businesses, or they claim they businesses, these warehouses and stuff, and it's doing nothing but destroying the neighborhood. It's not benefiting the county whatsoever. Y'all need to ride down there and sit there and watch and see what goes on. And I'm, I'm gonna tell you, that's, that is very disappointing. They just went that way. I served 12 years, I wouldn't have served but 10 if it hadn't have been for my wife. Because I got aggravated with it because thing was not going like it was supposed to. And I told her I was quitting, I was getting out of it, she said, nope, you stood up and told the people you'd represent them. So I did, I finally stayed for the other two years. And won't never get back in it again. And I have advised my young'uns not to never get into politics. Because politics is dirty, I can tell you, all the way from the bottom to the top. I've dealt with it all the way to the governor's office. And thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sapp, thanks for serving us in the past. Any other questions, uh, comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Uh, my name is Daniel Ben Israel. I'm the real estate development manager for the Parker Companies.
I recognize you.
Uh, yes, I've been here a few times.
Daniel, what was your last name?
Ben Israel.
Israel.
Uh-huh. B E N hyphen Y I S R A E L. And I'd like to, Mr. Chair, I'd like to request, uh, um, point of clarification from the staff on whether or not, uh, convenience stores, uh, with fueling, with diesel fueling stations are explicitly allowed in the B2 zoning district. Um, I tried looking it up just then, but I just wanted to clarify, that way everyone's on the same page as to why we're rezoning this property from B2 to B3. Uh, there are a few, um, case studies, one belonging to the Parker Companies, where recently we be, we came before the commission for the site located at the corner of Blue J Road and Highway 17. Uh, that property, we were advised at that time to rezone that property to B3 as well, uh, because that store, like this store, actually will have, um, diesel fueling positions. And so, uh, I recall, if I recall correctly, uh, we were advised to do that because that location or that use and the, and the characteristics thereof, uh, were more compatible with the, uh, B3 zoning designation, as opposed to the B2. And I can't recall if there were some, um, changes that, uh, staff was contemplating making to the B3 district or B2 district that would maybe at some point in the future conflict with our use, if we were to build it and then be in the B2 zone? But I, I, I seem to remember something along those lines.
So, so that is pretty standard staff advice when you're dealing with, um, diesel fueling and also truck stops? Just to sort of walk you through the, quickly, the, the progression of commercial zoning. Um, it needs to be at least B1, you can have a convenience store. You need at least B2 for any sort of fueling station. B2, once you get into conditional uses, then you add on things like, uh, commercial parking, um, automobile service, other more high-intensity uses that you would find at a truck stop. Let's see. And then, once we get down to B3, a prohibited use in B2 is bulk fuel storage. Just, again, just for an overview of sort of the spirit of the different B zonings. Once we get down to B3, if we get down to B3. Once you get down to B3, you have all uses permitted in all the B districts. Then you also tag on automotive sales services and storage, and conditional uses such as automotive paint and body, motor freight terminals. So depending on the size and scale of the truckhouse operation, B3 is a more compatible zoning. And I am looking up something that specifically cites diesel usage and diesel fueling stations. And I'm not finding anything specifically for B3. I was not part of the meeting that staff had for this project, but my interpretation would be that because of the intensity of the use, it's more appropriate and in the spirit of B3.
With the heavy trucks?
Correct.
And that would be like parking overnight, too? Are y'all gonna have, uh, like, truck stop activity there with the, uh, heavy trucks, too?
So the, the, I know that the site plan isn't, um, up for review at this hearing, however, um, I will tell you, you probably saw it earlier, we have provided for, I believe, 10, uh, truck spaces, uh, truck parking spaces on the conceptual plan. Again, that's a concept plan, um, if, you know, we haven't done any detailed engineering yet. There are wetlands on the property, we will have to provide for onsite septic, um, and stormwater management. So if we can fit all of that on the property, then we do intend to have, um, as planned, 10 diesel, um, I'm sorry, 10 truck, um, parking spaces on the site.
So, Daniel, let me ask you this, um, I, I, you've heard the outcry about the noise, and what is, and Parkers is a great organization. Um, and a lot of the people that came up said that, you know, they use that services. So what would, what would Parkers do to alleviate some of that background noise that these people are offended by? Because, you know, you're invading their privacy.
Sure. I mean, that's a fair question, and I, I mean, I, I can't stand here and say, oh yeah, we would be able to monitor that very closely because it's gonna happen, it's gonna occur late at night, um, early mornings.
Sound walls, you don't have any buffer ideas or anything like that?
Well, I mean, if you look at the site plan, uh, do you still have it up?
Yeah.
So, um, I mean, if you look at the location of the truck parking, I don't know what the, what the exact distance is from the nearest residential property, which is right here, I believe.
The residential is to your left.
Yeah.
So that behind you and to the right is all commercial.
So, uh, to the left, I don't know what the distance is, it's a, I mean, several hundred feet.
But that's where your retention pond seems to be.
Yeah, so it's, the, the retention pond, then there's some landscaped area, um, most of that's gonna be disturbed, we will have
Water, amphipod, something. And on the wild pine, too?
So we will, I mean, conceivably, we could, uh, try to save some of those trees along that property boundary. Um, we'd have to go back and look at, again, how the hydrology works on the site. This pond design is a very preliminary design. Um, that's a low point of the site. And so that's where we're thinking that it's gonna work best for us to channel our stormwater runoff. Um, but again, that has to be, we have to look at the, the soils. We'll have to do infiltration testing in, in order to determine whether or not that's in fact the right location and if, and, and how large that pond it needs to be. Um, we can consider, I mean, there's a good stand of trees on that side of the property. Um, we can make some adjustments to ensure that we, you know, come up with some reasonable, uh, buffering on that property. Uh, that's one thing that I can, I can readily offer up, uh, to work with staff on, um, and to work with the board on, towards, uh, making sure that we do preserve some of those trees along that property boundary. Um, we can, I, I can't say in any, um, certain and defined terms right now what that buffer would be or what we would, what we would, uh, initially put forth.
But you're aware of the outcry and you're.
Sure, absolutely.
You're willing to work with, um, the situation.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We, we, um, we, we understand the concerns. You know, I used to sit where Katie and Chelsea sitting, um, in a former career. And so, um, at one point I was advocating, uh, for the individuals that are bringing forth those concerns. And so I'm, I'm sensitive to those things and, and I'll do everything in, in our power to make sure that we address them to the greatest extent possible. I, I'm not making any promises that we will alleviate any potential problems. But, um, we are a, um, a privately owned, locally owned business. Um, I'm sure some of you may know Mr. Parker. And so we're willing to work with the community citizens, uh, to make sure that what we do here is, becomes an asset to the community. And, uh, we'll try to address those concerns to the greatest extent possible. I would like to bring something up that, uh, that I do recall from the previous meeting that I referenced earlier. Um, I think we were advised partly to seek the B three zoning because it was, um, uh, compatible with adjacent zoning as well at Blue Jay, at the intersection of Blue Jay, I believe the existing convenience store, uh, across the street from our future location is B three. Um, and then I do recall the conversation about, uh, the future of this area as well. And, um, as Mr. Smith said earlier, the initial thought is to consider what zoning designation is appropriate for this property. And then we're gonna come back, uh, with a very detailed site plan or sketch plan for your, for consideration. Um, so we're in agreement that, you know, B three is probably the more, the most compatible zoning, not only for our use, but also for the future, um, in, uh, of this area in accordance with the, uh, land use plan of the county.
Katie, all of that orange that's on the map there, um, is that industrial zoned?
That is, excuse me, that is industrial zoning, correct. So while there is, there is a good deal of agricultural residential land in the area, there is also a good deal of industrial zoned property and B two zoned property, including this parcel in question.
So a follow-up question, when you listed the, the new uses that would be in B three, did that remove the condition of the commercial parking?
It would then be a permitted use in B three if it's conditional in B two.
And by the fact that there's overnight spaces, is that considered the commercial parking then? Is that why that?
That, that would be included in commercial parking, yes.
Doubt it. It would be a condition in B two to allow kind of the contemplated plan.
Correct.
Then the follow-up, the buffers required, whether or not this is B two or B three, they got required buffers on the site, right? Cause they're surrounded by two sides.
There, there are required buffers and they do not differ between B two and B three.
What is that buffer? Fifty foot for, um, B two to a B three to a residential? I think it is.
Is it thirty feet?
I think it's.
It's thirty feet.
Yes, sir. I think it's actually thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
The initial plan showing a thirty foot buffer on here.
Yes, sir. Between commercial and residential is thirty feet.
And staff's okay with us making a recommendation without a DRI back?
Staff is, is recommending approval, um, before the receipt of the DRI.
We're a little disa, we're at a little disadvantage, Daniel, because Miss, um, Teresa is out this evening. And so Katie and, and so the young lady are doing their best to.
Oh, absolutely.
Answer our questions.
They're doing a great job. And I appreciate that, Mr. Chair. Um, when is the, um, on what date will the, um, Board of Commissioners hearing be after this recommendation?
August second.
August second. So that's two, three weeks out. And I think, uh, we're probably a week out from getting our D I, DRI review back, um, a week or two out. And so we should have that back prior to the Board of Commissioners hearing, I believe.
Correct. The other DRI that was submitted at the same time as yours, we received last week.
Okay.
So any, any second now.
Sure. So I mean, to the, uh, to, to your point, Mr. Thompson, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I mean, I think we'll have that report back. Uh, we don't suspect that it's gonna, uh, come back with anything negative. We won't know until we get it. But, um, you know, if the board is so inclined, uh, that report should be back prior to the Board of Commissioners hearing. Um, and again, uh, we still have to yet come back for the sketch plan review as well. So, uh, we respectfully ask, uh, for your, um, recommendation to approve.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience that wants to, um, speak up for or against this petition?
I've got one more quick.
Come on, Mr. Sapp.
I'm looking at this temporary site plan.
Mr. Sapp, could you stand right up here in front of that mic so it can be recorded and you can see that same picture there? Isn't that right, Katie?
I was looking at that temporary site plan. And according to what I'm looking at, the station is gonna be set in the wetlands. That is wetlands where that's at.
Why is that road?
Right there against the road going into the Industrial Development Authority. That's wetlands in there. The high end of the property is right there next to my son. And that's where they proposing to put the retention pond?
Yes.
Up on the hill. Like I tell you, y'all need to ride down there and look at things, or somebody does. This stuff is just getting completely out of hand.
I'm sure our commissioners are gonna look at this very carefully.
Well, I don't know. I don't have a bunch of faith in it.
I do ride by it. I'm familiar with the site. Um, was there a, uh, again, this is another question to staff. Do we have wetland information with this in it? Balloon nation?
Um, not at this time, but that would be if, if the wetlands are, um, you know, in question, that would be something that we would require.
I've done seen it too many times. They'll buy other property and fill wetlands. I've seen that happen.
So wet, wetlands credits and filling of wetlands is, is that the discretion of the court?
They buy credits and go in and fill the wetlands and do whatever.
I understand, for sure.
And, and I am strongly opposed to the rezoning. And I think all, the most of the residents on, in that area is.
Thank you, Mr. Sapp.
I'm Kendall Harville.
Kendall, what was your last name?
Harville.
Harville.
If y'all could please go back to the colored picture, if y'all don't mind. I've lived in this area all thirty-five years of my life and I've lived on this end of the county. Traveled Old River Road many, many times. All these people in the green were here first. Y'all keep talking about future land use and how B three and industrial and commercial uses are gonna be fitting in with that plan better. Do y'all plan on kicking all these people in these houses out to make that fit better? None of them asked for that to be zoned industrial. The IDA got their hands on that piece of property, God knows how many years ago. It was supposed to start out as a movie studio and we were gonna be Little Hollywood on the East Coast or something. And now it's industrial. It's gonna be warehouses. It's gonna be big trucks. It's gonna be truck stops. None of those people want that. I don't want that. I don't want a Parkers right there. I have to travel that way to get to Savannah to work still. And it's a dangerous road. People have been killed on that curve. Y'all need to consider these things when y'all are approving these rezonings. Because y'all have faith in the commissioners, but I don't. They're gonna pass the buck, be like, well, the planning board approved it, it's fine. And then y'all sit up here and pass the buck. Well, the Board of Commissioners are gonna consider this carefully. Y'all don't. They don't. Not discrediting y'all's time and effort that y'all do put into these things. I just sat through, uh, seven hearings. Half the people were not here and you're like, seems simple enough, let's prove it. Now granted, these were home changes, seemingly small changes. But if that's the attitude y'all take with the majority of these changes, who's responsible? It's not the people who've lived here before the IDA came in and decided to change everything. And talking about buffers and borders and stuff. My parents live a mile away from Highway eighty on the Okeechobee River. Maybe further than a mile. We have forests between their house and Highway eighty. You hear truck noise and road noise all day, all night. We can hear when the wrecks happen at Sand Hill and eighty. A couple of trees and a retention pond are not gonna cut noise. A wall is not gonna cut noise. The noise will be there. So I think y'all really need to start listening to the people who live in these areas and taking that to heart when making these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harville. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
Yes, sir.
My name's David Wood. Uh, good evening, fellows. I was at, uh, the last meeting when Parkers was pushing for permits for the Blue Jay, um, Highway seventeen. Um, you know, that, that piece of property had multiple three hundred plus year old trees on it. And, uh, Mr. Daniel mentioned that he was gonna do everything in his power to preserve these trees in this property. And I'll be damned if those trees weren't the first thing to go. They went before the driveway was put in. And, uh, so I, I agree with Mr., Mr. Ryan here about follow-up. You know, you, you hear all these concerns about development in Effingham County. These folks are Effingham County, you know, so if we're at this meeting and then you got these developers coming in and saying more lies, you need to listen to them. Need to follow up on this shit because, because you're running the good folk out for a dollar bill. Basically, what you doing? That's all I've got to say about the Parkers, uh, ordeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Would anyone else like to speak? Would you come back up, Daniel?
Mr. Chair, if I may, um, I would like to address those comments and, and the gentleman is correct. I, uh, when I appeared before you and the Board of Commissioners, there were some concerns about the trees that were on the Blue Jay property.
I recall that.
And we did say that we would make every effort to save those trees. Um, we actually almost did not do that store again because of some very severe site constraints. Um, having to deal with the fact that we are forced to put, um, that store on septic and, uh, well water. And there are regulations governing how far the well has to be from the septic field and how much usable land you have to have in order to be approved for septic. And you have to have that additional, that secondary drain field. Once we did all of those calculations and determined the best place to put the stormwater, um, management facility on the site, we were limited with, uh, residual usable land for that property. It pushed everything closer to the intersection. Uh, we also had to put in, um, a deceleration lane coming out of the roundabout. And that just squeezed the site even more. Um, and at that point, given all of the disturbances that would occur in close proximity to those trees, um, it was determined that those trees would not survive the grading that was to take place, um, under the approved site plan. Uh, we did commit to come back with a very robust landscaping plan, which we have. Uh, again, it doesn't replace the existing mature trees. Um, but we did make a very, um, uh, meaningful effort to, to, to plant, um, some, some substantial trees in our landscaping plan that will over time grow. Um, again, I, I appreciate the concern and I, I do wish we could have preserved those trees, but it just wasn't possible.
Well, thank you for, um, that explanation. Would anyone else like to speak for or against the petition? Does anybody on the board have any concerns or questions?
I do. And I know it's not one of the listed options. There, there's enough questions that I would, I would rather hear some more answers related to one having the DRI back. Just having that information before I make a recommendation one way or the other. So I know you're, you're wanting to move forward and get to the counts, uh, the county commission, but as we've heard, I mean, we are a recommending body. We don't make the decision, but I, I do take pride in the recommendation I made. And I, I feel like we should have that, uh, planning document back before we make a recommendation one way or the other. So I guess before I make a motion, I'm gonna ask, do I have the option for a deferral? Or to ask, I guess I can always ask them, but otherwise I don't feel comfortable making a recommendation without that back.
Do you want to table?
That's, that's table, deferral, what, call it what you will, but.
Yes, you have the option to make that motion.
I'll make the option to table the decision until we have the DRI information back. And any other supporting information you can have to help justify why we need to change the zoning, cause I still am very confused as to why we would need to change the zoning for what we're proposing to do.
Okay. So you're gonna make that in the form of a motion, Ryan?
Yes, I.
So I've got a motion for tabling by Ryan, um, until we get the DRI, uh, report. Do I have a second?
I'd like to go ahead and run it through. I know what I wanna do. I mean, I don't know how you feel, Al.
I know, I know what I wanna do.
Daniel, do you have something else to add? Cause we're right.
A question, actually.
Okay.
Um, only, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, is this an, um, an open tabling of the agenda item where staff will determine once we get the DRI report back, when we appear on the agenda? Or, uh, would the board consider, um, continuing the hearing to the next available agenda, provided that we get the DR report back prior to that hearing? That way we know when we're coming back. Um, and the only condition that would have to be satisfied is that staff receives the DRI report prior to that meeting.
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate. That we table until the, the report comes into the next available meeting.
The DRI should absolutely be available long before the August fifteenth planning board meeting.
Yeah, I'm certainly not trying to drag it out. I just feel like I, that's some information I would.
Okay, that's fine. We, we're, we're fine with that. And we will come back with more information on, uh, possible buff, buffer widths, um, to address that concern as well. Um, I think that's a valid concern that we should be prepared to address at the next hearing.
Hold on. Okay. Well, let me, let me, let me put that in the form of a motion and see how the, um, the, the board here votes on that, Daniel. So I have a motion now that we table to the next available, until the DRI, uh, report comes back to the next available meeting. Do I have a second? The, the motion fails. Would anyone else like to make a motion?
Suppose. Do I need to make a motion to do that? That's what we're doing anyway, right?
So we're gonna make a, you're gonna make a motion?
Alright, make a motion that we vote tonight.
All right, make a motion that we vote tonight.
All right, well, I know we're gonna vote tonight, so, uh, would you like to make a motion for or against this petition?
I'll vote to deny.
I have a motion for denial, um, by Mr. Smith. Do I have a second?
No, seconded.
So I have a second. Uh, all in favor? All opposed?
Just abstain.
Uh, one abst, one abstention. So we have three denials, one abstained. Uh, so motion for denial carries. And this will be heard again on August second by the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. So your recommendation goes to the board?
Yeah, so you still go through the, to the county commissioners.
All right, thank you.
Motion denied.
That means August second, correct?
August second.
Yeah, August second, motion denied. Thanks, everyone, for speaking up. Okay, the next item on this evening's agenda is item number nine, which is WD Glass Vase Import Incorporated. As Agent for Terry Greiner requests to rezone seven point three eight acres from B three to I one to allow for the development of a distribution center located at the intersection of Highway seventeen, Pound Road and Go-Kart Road, which this is in the third district. Is Terry Greiner or anyone from WD Glass Vase Import here? Good evening.
Good evening, Terry Greiner.
All right, Mr. Greiner. Uh, tell us a little bit about your vision for, um, industrial growth on a distribution center on, uh, Highway seventeen.
I bought the property a few years ago with the intention of putting them mini-stores and camper and boat storage in it. And I had a survey done. It was more money than I was gonna be able to pay my way out of before I ever seen any return on it. I ain't wanting to create no bills. Put the property up for sale. I didn't wanna put houses there, 'cause you would have so many different neighbors. I figured if, I had these people approach me about this hearing, it was supposed to be no, you know, no semi-trucks, just smaller, like the Amazon trucks, and they only sold crystal and china. So I thought someone was supposed to be here with me.
Okay, well, that is, um, that's an interesting, it's surrounded by, um, residential.
It's farmland.
Yeah, right across the street, farm, but then there's houses right adjacent to it and, and behind it. Okay, um, let me see if we have any, um, interested, um, comments, interesting comments from the, uh, the gallery. So if you'll just have a seat, I'll call. Would anyone like to speak for or against this petition?
Take a number.
Take a number?
I'm Kendall Harville again.
Excuse me, Mr. Vice Chair. Would, would you like to hear from staff first?
Yes, may I, may I please hear from staff? I'm so sorry.
All right, that, that is absolutely, I just check in with you. So yes, as you have noted, it is completely surrounded by agricultural residential use. The next nearest commercial site, um, the B two site is actually for a cell tower. At the time, cell towers were rezoned commercially in seven-acre parcels. Uh, this particular parcel that we're looking at now is zoned B three. It was zoned B three in two thousand eighteen to accommodate boat and camper storage and mini-storage units. One of the conditions of that rezoning was limited driveway access to Go-Kart Road. So while it is B three commercial, the intended use in that area was relatively low impact. The applicant is proposing developing a hundred and thirty thousand square foot wholesale warehouse and distribution center with driveways that access onto both Pound Road and Go-Kart Road. In addition to that, they are proposing in their concept plan, six loading bays and two hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces. This is a very high intensive use for this area and staff is recommending denial.
I can see why. Thank you, Katie. Ms. Harville, would you like to speak?
Um, I'm actually going to speak on behalf of a friend who was not able to come tonight, and then I'm gonna speak for myself. So, um, do y'all want me to notate his name here?
Yes, please.
Okay. My name is Michael Edwards and I'm a thirty-seven-year resident of Panora. As a longtime member of the community here, I am passionately against the industrial rezoning of any property that is in a residential area in Panora. Especially one that is adjacent to a church that is a staple in the community. As a lifelong member of Panora Baptist Church, I have seen dozens of wrecks at the Honey Ridge Go-Kart Highway seventeen intersection. It is a dangerous and busy intersection as it stands already. When you factor in traffic from church services on weekends, hundreds of children at Wednesday evening services, and morning and evening traffic to and from work, it stands to reason that this would not be a safe or ideal location for a warehouse or distribution space of any size, given its location in a primarily residential community. The Panora community is a quiet residential one with many lovely families. It is ripe with family tradition, local history, and beautiful natural landscape. It serves as a quiet escape from the daily grind for many. To disrupt that with a warehouse, logistics, and industrial traffic, and all the negatives that come with an industrial warehouse, would not only be an unsafe and unwise decision, but it would be a breach of trust that Panora residents have placed in elected officials to represent and protect their best interest. Now, that was Mr. Edwards' thoughts on the project. My thoughts on the project are how, Highway seventeen and Honey Ridge Road has a history of serious wrecks and accidents. Just yesterday, my husband was driving through there to work and somebody pulled out in front of him and he almost got into a wreck. Um, there have been fatal accidents there. Last December, there was a very serious wreck where a motorcyclist could have lost his life. I don't care what size vehicles are coming out of that parking lot. Two hundred and thirty-eight of them a day, give or take, would be excessive in that area. In the afternoons, coming home from work, there's occasionally a line of people down Highway seventeen waiting to turn left on the Honey Ridge Road. And it's just, it's terrible. It's congested. And any industrial rezoning is unwise and unnecessary. Not to mention the noise and light pollution. There's one house right by that pond. That would become their backyard, an industrial warehouse and parking lot. Would anybody wanna walk out their front door or back door and be greeted by a warehouse? I don't think so. Um, I think that is, other than the fact that while there are other commercial properties slightly down the road, none of them create this much disturbance in the area. Thank you. That might be the last y'all hear from me tonight.
Promises, promises. Thank you, Ms. Harville. That was very well put. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Don Sitter, Sitter. I'll write that down here for you.
S-I-T-T-E-R?
Yes. Thank you. So I'll give you the BLUF, bottom line up front. This is not a su- suitable community for a distribution warehouse. Amount of land covered by paving without retention shown. You're gonna bring additional traffic up Midland Road, which has already historically been shown to be a very dangerous road with, during my lifetime of living in the community, four-way stops now added at Blue Jay and, uh, Courthouse Road. So now some of that traffic is gonna be forced onto there. And it's not a through truck road by, by designation. And, uh, seventeen and nineteen are already heav- heavily trafficked. And I, I think you're looking at a saturation increase that is inappropriate. And there's much else to say, but most to the lady that spoke before, amen.
Thank you, Mr. Sitter. Would anyone else like to speak for or against?
Absolutely.
Is that Mr. Wood, David Wood?
My name's David Wood. Uh, I live on Pound Road. Pound Road is, uh, one of the ash roads. We've got a hundred and sixty-five here in Effingham County. It's in rough shape. Um, of course, go, go-kart roads, no different. And, uh, and everybody's right. I mean, we've got Dollar General, we got El Chepo, we've got a church being built at the corner of, of, uh, Midland and seventeen. Nothing's been done with the intersections. Um, and, and you've got houses right there. You've got people across the street, you got people to the right of that, that, um, uh, building where they wanna put it. And I don't understand, you see it more and more where they're taking agricultural land and rezoning it. Is, is there a reason behind that? I, I can't imagine having something or land and people telling me what I can and cannot do. But if I buy ag land, I'm gonna, I should be made to keep it ag land or sell it as ag land. Uh, what is, what is, what determines whether you can change from ag to commercial to, um, putting, uh, buildings in that on?
Oh, the zoning board and the county commissioners.
Okay. Because we see that more and more. You know, we had ag land down there by the vet's office on seventeen. And last I heard, they're putting two hundred and some odd houses on it, just outside of Guy. So we're lea-, we're seeing our ag land go, and that's the reason we live out there, is for, to get away from the hustle and bustle. So basically what y'all are telling us, we just gotta keep moving from our homes to run away from all this stuff? Because I very seldom hear y'all say no about anything. I was proud of y'all tonight with the Parkers' deal. But very seldom, everything is, you know, approved. And I just wonder when it's gonna stop, is up all.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
Thank y'all.
Would anyone else like to speak for or against the petition that's on, on the table right now?
Good evening.
Evening. My name is Michael Elkins. My wife and I live on one nineteen, just off of Honey Ridge Road. And for about six years now, and in that time, the traffic in the area has steadily increased. Something like this will only add much more fuel on the fire. And the reason we live in Effingham is because we lived in Chatham County. The reason we left Chatham County is all the stuff that's happening right here. I don't wanna move any further out. I like where I am. But if I have to, I will. Not interested in moving. If I'm forced to, because we get more warehouses and businesses and concrete and retention ponds and noise. I like walking outside at night and seeing stars. I don't like walking outside and seeing halogen lamps. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Elkins. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
Good evening.
Hey, I'm, uh, Eli Fowler. I live on.
What's your last name?
Fowler. Me and my wife live on Pound Road, um, right next door to Mr. Terry Greiner, or as I know him, K-Roe. And, uh, my wife's family has been on Pound Road since the nineteen twenties, when her great-grandfather and great-uncle cleared that land and started farming it. She is a pound, um, until she became a Fowler. We currently raise cows on pound farms, which touches, uh, this track of land we're talking about. Um, you know, we brought up a lot of good points tonight about the traffic at that intersection. It's already a nightmare. Nobody wants this thing in their backyard. But more importantly, um, you know, I know my neighbor, K-Roe Greiner, he's a great neighbor. I don't know WD Glass Vase. I don't know how that's gonna be raising animals right next to it. And if we start, you know, approving stuff for industrial out in these type of areas, it sets a precedent. You know, I grew up in a small town about an hour and a half outside of Atlanta. And, uh, the year I was born, population was twenty-one thousand. And today, it's a half a million. You know, this will be the second farm that I've lived on and poured, you know, money and work and sweat into it that just gets strip malls and neighborhoods stacked on top of it as everybody sells around it. So that's what I worried about and that's why I'm here tonight. And I hate that I'm having to be here tonight opposing my neighbor, because like I said, he's a great neighbor. But anyways, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fowler. Would anyone else like to speak for or against the petition?
My name's Steve Todd. I live about a half mile down Honey Ridge Road, right across from three-hundred-acre ag farm that the county owns. I too know Mr. Greiner. We're not close friends, but he's let me in the hunting club a few times to get some free pine straw and I appreciate that. Uh, like the gentleman that just spoke, I have nothing against Mr. Greiner and his wishes for his property. I too don't know this glass vase company. I do know warehouses. I grew up, uh, nineteen fifty-seven till ninety-six, when I moved to Effingham and lived on Montgomery Cross Road, when it was a two, two-lane country road. My wife grew up a mile from White Bluff and Montgomery Cross Road intersection. We got married, moved up here. I moved here in ninety-six, back to Chatham County, forgive me. And then we came back here in oh-three, and the lady who kept our daughter, well, y'all need to move over here to Rankin, we got a Walmart. And we said, ma'am, we're running from Walmart. So as the gentleman spoke that lives on Pound Road, Mr. Fowler, ironically, this morning, my neighbor's three steers were in the middle of the road at seven-thirty a.m., three county deputies. Two, three weeks ago, we had half a dozen Honey Ridge ag farm cows right in the middle of the curve on Honey Ridge. We've had goats in the road, we've had horses in the road. I was the fourth one on the scene when the motorcyclist got hit. I thought he was dead. There's been some, a good friend of mine's son hit a chip truck, jackknifed it, burned the driver bad, hit the first house opposite where Mr. Greiner's property is. So yeah, there's been several bad accidents. Honey Ridge Road from one nineteen to seventeen is a shortcut for Bullock County. The traffic is insane. My front porch is fifty feet from Honey Ridge. Adding this type of facility isn't, is nuts in that area. I'm not opposed to growth. I'm not opposed to a man profiting off of his property. But an industrial zoning in that area should not happen. I agree with the staff. Years back, some of you may remember, Mr. Collins actually bought the ballpark that the commission thought they owned, Panora Ballpark. Well, they didn't. He tried to have it zoned industrial. That's been about ten years ago. And thank God and common sense, it was denied by whoever set in these seats. So I'd appreciate if you guys, again, no, no offense to Mr. Greiner, but it's the wrong place for industrial development. I'm afraid what's gonna happen if that passes? There's a lot of open tracts of land. Here comes another industry, another industry, and like Mr. Elkins said, where do we go? I mean, I ran from Chatham County. I, I don't mind running again, but I'm an old man. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Todd. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition? Are you the lady with the steers?
I am. Uh, yes, I mean, and I, I'm, I'm backing up, um, Mr. Steve and Mr. Fowler over here. He's got cows, we've got livestock. I mean, my nephew shows, uh, my daughter shows, my co- nephews, all of them show. And as an agriculturist, um, you know, I do live across, um, from the Agri Center. So if we're putting traffic on Honey Ridge Road, because you know people from Statesboro is gonna come in. So if we're putting traffic on Honey Ridge Road, because you know people from Statesboro is gonna come in to work at this warehouse, so, and they already are using it from coming from Savannah area. What is that gonna do for our kids? I mean, we're gonna, you know, we're putting them in more danger, 'cause, I mean, that's what we have the Agro Center for, is for kids to have pigs, goats, cows, you know? And then we're gonna add traffic? I mean, we've got a bunch of 16 and 17-year-olds out there driving the roads. I mean, they don't drive good anyway, you know? I mean, so we're gonna put more traffic on that road for them to get over to feed their animals? I mean, it's gonna kill it and, you know, or kill them, really. I mean, possible. I mean, we've already got wrecks down there, you know? So I think we should take that in consideration. I mean, our kids, you know? I've got kids. I've got a 16-year-old nephew that's starting to drive. He drives horribly, you know? I mean, I've got less than 10 years and my daughter starts driving, you know? And if she drives anything like her mama, good luck. It's gonna be rough.
Could you write your name down and state it for the record?
Oh, yep, yep, I sure will. Jody D's, sorry.
State your name again?
Jody D's.
Thank you, Jody.
Yes, and that's all I gotta say. Just kinda think of, you know, think about our kids and them driving on Honey Ridge, and what is it gonna do to our Agro Center? I mean, that's why we have the Agro Center. We have it for them, you know? Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for or against this petition?
Good evening, everyone. My name's Dan Howe, and I live off of Honey Ridge Road over there.
Dan, what's your last name?
Howe, H-O-W-E. We came out here from Poole, when Poole used to be about 4,000 residents. We came out here for the schools, development and stuff like that. My daughter graduated high school several years ago, went to college and moved away. We've lived out there since 2005. It's a great area, fun environment out there. You got the ball field with hundreds of kids out there every night. And also, you're gonna have the Georgia High Low Trail, which is a biking trail that's gonna run along the old railroad bed. And it runs from Athens, Georgia, all the way down to the coast of Savannah. So that's gonna bring in more economic impact than what the warehouse out here would bring in at any point. Plus the parking spaces and everything else out there. The warehouse is non-taxed, whatever sits in there, so we don't get any benefit off of that at all here in the county, which is bad, because we voted on that a few months ago, and how it was written, that every single warehouse and whatever sits in that warehouse, we don't get any tax for it. So that really kinda stinks on our part as a county, because we didn't understand what was going on. But with that being said, the 238 parking spots sitting out there, how many day laborers are gonna come in from Savannah, Georgia for $8 to $10 an hour, unload five or six trucks, and then leave and go back to Savannah, Georgia? And how many full-time workers are gonna sit in that warehouse? Probably four or five cars out there, max. And you can see it when you go by Blanford, how many cars are sitting in those parking lots every day. There's 400 or 500 parking spaces out there, and what, maybe 20 cars in each of them? You know, we gotta do something about this. We need high-paying educational jobs brought into here, not warehouse is that sit out here where we get no benefit as taxpayers, but we pay taxes on it every year. So, in that retrospect, going back to the warehouses, we just need to slow down, think about things, use common sense, because a lot of us have lost this common sense, and we're all about the old mighty buck, or whose land it is and how much we can profit off it. It shouldn't be that way. And as representatives, I'm glad you took a stand tonight against Parker's. I really appreciate that, because I know Mr. Sapp, and it was very hard to sit back there and listen to him. I've been out on his property and how peaceful it is out there, and now you sit out there and you can hear semis that are three or four miles away over there in the industrial park, or you didn't have that before. So, you guys just need to take hold. We got Hyundai coming in here with higher-paying jobs versus warehouse workers that come in from Savannah, Georgia every day and make $8 or $10 an hour. You know, you want your kids to stay and live here and work here. Those are the jobs we need to bring here, not, you know, trucks, semi and everything else. So, we just need to slow down and think about things. That's all I have to say.
Well, thank you, Mr. Howe. All right, I think we have a good consensus of what the audience's feelings are. Is there any questions from the board or concerns?
I'd like to ask Katie, they don't have any buffer around that building to speak of, do they?
They have not formally submitted a sketch plan at this time. So it is not clear, based on the copy they submitted, what the intended buffers are. They would have to apply to industrial to ag buffers if they were to be approved.
The sketch they put in there clearly, you know, is less than 120 feet. It's the largest area.
I would say that would be safe to say that what we're looking at right here does not reflect inadequate buffer for industrial to AR.
The existing site plan is only 350 feet wide. It's only 350 feet wide.
All right, Mr. Greiner, you're back at the podium. Do you have anything to add to what you just heard from the, your neighbors?
Nah, you ain't got but one neighbor here that's really concerned, you know, that's got any business other than the rest of them talking about traffic. But you got 300 houses coming in right down the road from Guyton. Traffic's coming. You got 700 houses going in front of the high schools over here. Traffic's coming. I can't see where this one warehouse with a few workers, they're not gonna work 24 hours a day out there. There's not supposed to be no big trucks or nothing coming. It's all wee small, you know, like the Amazon trucks and stuff. I can't see where that would be no more dangerous than me putting seven, eight, 20 houses down there and you having that many more neighbors. I mean, I'm 55 years old. I worked for myself forever, and I've worked hard. And I bought land with the intentions of doing a mini storage and a camper and boat storage there, and I don't see that much difference in the building size or what I was gonna do than what this is. I mean, you've just logged 6,000 acres right behind that land. 6,000 acres, that many log trucks has come out of the go-kart road.
And it was, it was a danger when they were coming in and out. I drive that way every day.
Okay, Mr. Greiner, just-
You drive everywhere. You and your husband's got your nose in the county commissioner's business, Guyton city business, and everybody else's business.
Mr. Greiner, please, and Ms. Harville, just hold on. You'll have a chance to speak. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Greiner, and we'll, we'll take a vote on it in just a minute.
I mean, I just don't see no difference in it than the mini storage and camper and boat storage. Except for I ain't going $2.5 million in debt.
Well, the only problem, the big problem I see with it is, in industrial, you've got a 300-foot buffer unless you ask for a variance.
Yeah.
And we have cut them to 150, but, so when you got 150 on both sides, it only leaves you 50 feet to build a building. I don't think you've got enough room to-
Well, it's 400 foot wide.
It's 400 foot wide?
That's right.
Well, you need 300 foot of it, or a minimum of 300. If you've got a variance, to have buffers around it.
Well, if I was to put the mini storage there, that was already approved for.
But it was a different zoning. It wasn't industrial.
And when you go into industrial-
It'd be zoning.
That's B3.
It's altogether different.
When you go to I1.
Buffer requirement.
See, a staff just told us it was a 30-foot buffer for B3. So right now, you would be giving up 30 feet of your adjacent property by going to zoning to this. Without a variance, you're going to a 300-foot buffer, which would actually overlap inside your piece of property. And I, trust me, I understand things, I understand your argument, that things, traffic, things are gonna continue to grow.
I mean, traffic's coming. Believe it or not, you know, wherever you wanna be, you ain't gonna stop it.
Yes, but there are certain spots for certain things and-
Yeah, that's not the appropriate spot. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Greiner. We're gonna take a vote now. With that said, I'm gonna ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny by Mr. Zipper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second for Mr. Thompson. All in favor? Aye, denied. Motion denied, but this will be heard again on August 2nd in front of the county commissioners. The next item on this evening's agenda is item number 10. And that is James Carlson requests to rezone five of 20 acres from AR1 to B2 to allow for a commercial development located on Highway 119 South. That's in the 3rd district. Mr. Carlson, I think I see you standing in front of us. How are you?
Good evening, Chair. Good evening, Board.
Good evening. So this is on the property of the funeral home?
It's actually, we bought the 20 acres beside the funeral home. And it has been for sale for 23 years, and we decided to buy it, and we're looking to put a pet cremation facility there. We know that there's a need, because we have people that call our funeral home daily. They think our human crematory is a pet crematory also, and that is not how it works in the state of Georgia. So we are expanding our business and diversifying services, so we are looking to have a separate business on that property and a little bit of retail office space there, too.
Very good. Okay, Mr. Carlson, I think we'll ask for any comments from the audience, see how that works out. We'll get right back to you. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against Mr. Carlson's petition? Any questions from the board or any concerns?
I just be curious, is there anything staff, we need to-
No, pretty much what Mr. Carlson says. He is, he is looking to extend, actually, both of his properties right here up front is where you see the existing funeral home and crematory. That would then attach to a five-acre strip along the front, which is kind of, if I recall correctly, naturally buffered by wetlands over on this western side from the nearest AR1 property over there. In the back, the back 15 acres of this property is largely wetlands, which would then be combined with Mr. Carlson's AR1 property behind the funeral home for conservation.
Approximately, how much of the five acres is this gonna use?
The building is actually a 50 by 60, and it will have eight parking spots there, is what we're looking at. The services that we're doing is not high-traffic. It is appointment-only.
Maybe I should ask you to come back to the mic, Mr. Carlson. I'm so sorry.
No, Eric.
So, basically, building, we're looking as 50 to 80-foot max, and it would be very low-traffic. These would be, the offices that would be there would be satellite offices that people would have, so it would not be, we're not looking for major office businesses or anything. We want to keep it quiet. We do have a large business beside it, a funeral business, and we don't want anything that's gonna be affecting that.
Okay. And the crematorium would have, for lack of a better term, an oven, and so how many of those would be in that facility? Just one?
We will have it set up for two. We will be installing one due to the lack of, you know, with import, demand, and right now, we would, wanted to go in with two, but unfortunately, supply and demand and trying to get something, we're talking a nine-month turnaround just to get one machine, and we had to be put on a list four months ago. So, and we're still nine months out to even receive one machine, and they limit it to one machine to receive from the manufacturers that we use. So, you can't find them used either. So, we wanted two, but the facility will be set up for two, but it's not a machine that you can just get anywhere.
Can't get it at Costco.
Can't buy it at Costco. It'd be nice. I'd be the first one there with my membership.
And you're comfortable with the depth that you're proposing, and I'm just thinking about the buffer, 'cause you are gonna create your own buffer, even if it's your own property.
Correct.
You'll have a buffer, but you gotta buffer it yourself.
And basically, appointment-based only, it would be people to come in. We'll do a lot of trade cremation for the veterinarians' offices throughout the areas of Savannah, Poole or Statesboro. So that's the ideal of the business. It would not be really something appointment-only would be for if somebody called and wants something. But we would not just, it wouldn't be a drive-by, just come by and stop in and, you know, want to look at any kind of retail or anything like that.
All right. Should we combine these two together? Because the second, the next one is for him as well. It's different, though, isn't it?
It's a conditional use, right? The next one's a conditional use.
All right, let's get on with it. Let's, does anyone want to speak for or against this petition? Do we have any questions?
Nope.
Let's call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendation.
Got a motion for approval by Mr. Zipper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 11 is James Carlson requests a conditional use to allow for a crematorium located on Highway 119 South, Zone AR1, but now proposed zoning B2, 3rd district. What are we doing here?
Crematory is a conditional use allowed in B2. So in order, even though it is for pets rather than humans, Mr. Carlson does need to go through the formal application and obtain conditional use in order to do the pet crematory, which we've pretty much, I believe, discussed during the last item. As Mr. Carlson pointed out, state law prohibits treating human and pet remains in the same facility, so.
Thank you for clarification, Katie. So, since he's now been approved for B2 zoning, we're just now gonna make a motion for it to be conditional use?
Correct.
Do I have a motion for a conditional use?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion for approval for conditional use by Mr. Zipper. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Smith. All in favor? Motion carries by all. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Item number 12. Joseph Allen Kersey requests to rezone 3.32 acres from B3 to I1 to allow for increased use potential of existing commercial structures located at 119, 131, 145, 149, Commercial Court. This is in the 5th district. There's Mr. Kersey here.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Mr. Kersey.
Hey, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Hey, how you doing?
All right, so, it's pretty- These properties already exist, don't they, Alan?
Yes.
Katie, do you wanna give us a little presentation on that idea?
Vice Chairman, I will actually kinda step in for this one as well. So, this is just to rezone to I1 within the Commerce, the Commerce Park. As you can see on the map there, in 2001, Parcels 12 and 13 were rezoned to I1. And so this will unify, you know, some of that zoning within that Commerce Park.
Okay, so this is the property behind the old choo-choo?
That's it.
Yeah. Where there's that big industrial tract back in there.
That's right. That's what all that red is about.
Yeah, I got you. I got you. Now I'm focused on it. Okay, well, Mr. Kersey, let's see if there's anyone opposed or have any input from the audience. Does anyone would like to speak for or against this petition? Surprised. All right, if, is there any questions or comments from the board?
Well, we might be about to get to it, but since there's existing structures on there that we're gonna be approving a zoning that requires buffers, there'll be, how is that handled?
That is, that is the next item.
I just wanted to make sure. I thought that was, but I just wanted to make sure it's clear.
I think it's quite appropriate. I heard the track in there is going.
And as, if I may add, as Chelsea had pointed out, last year in 2021, we rezoned these two parcels, and it was specifically to allow for assembly manufacturing. And then since the same owner owned both parcels- And then since the same owner owned both parcels, just did both of them at the same time in order to be more competitive and attracts better businesses and more tenants.
So where, which, Katie, which one, can you use a pointer and show me where 119, 131, 145 and 149 is?
The one with the stars.
Stars?
I, I understand that, that the address points are, are kind of a mess here.
I see them, I see them now.
Basically, we're looking at these, right, these four contiguous properties to the two that we recently made industrial.
See them now.
Yeah.
Thank you. Did you have any other questions, Ryan?
No.
Okay. Well, let's, I'll call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I've got a motion for approval by Mr. Smith, do I have a second? Mr. Zipper's second, so all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is Alan Kersey, Joseph Allen Kersey requests a variance to allow for reduction in buffers between industrials and various zone parcels located at 119, 131, 145 and 149. Commercial Court, now zone B3, no, now currently B3 that proposed to I1 and that's in the 5th district. Mr. Kersey, I guess who, what kind of variance is you looking for?
I'm not real sure, to be honest with you.
It's got to fit industrial, we can't have the 300 feet.
Yeah.
So if we don't approve this, you got to tear all those buildings down then?
Right.
Didn't the county request that he go from B3 to I1?
No, we, we had not requested the applicant to go to I1. In the 2021 though, recognizing that this is a situation that the county was partially responsible for creating and allowing this development with really no buffers of any kind. Did allow an approval of the variance for these two industrial properties. Mr. Kersey is seeking the same. As you can see, there's very little room by any kind of zoning standard. There's, there's no buffers, the buildings are existing.
Basically, we're wanting to put CNC milling machines in there. And you, you can't put them in there with the current zone.
What's the buffer on 183 and 169?
Those are the two salmon at the bottom. But what's the concern is, what's the buffer from 119 to the one?
No, but they rezoned them, they were, they were B zoning as well and they rezoned them to I.
I know.
And I want to know what, what the buffer is on those.
Essentially, there's, there's no measurable buffer. I, I have measured them before, it's not large enough in many spots to be compatible with anything.
First star with the top one, I guess that is one, is that 115? I can't see, that's 119?
119, 123.
Alright, so then, okay, so to the north of that, or to right to that, what, what's going to be the buffer between that lot and the lot above it?
I don't know.
Because that lot up there is a B2 or B3, correct, Katie?
Over here, yes. I think.
Yeah, those lots there.
Yes. Yes, we're looking at B2 across the street.
In the same block that Mr. Kersey's four buildings are.
105, 101, 112, 120.
That, that.
What is that buffer?
That is, that is a different parcel, so that one is not being considered.
What is that parcel zone, B3?
That is zone B3.
Okay, so then there has to be a buffer between a B3 and an I1.
Were they notified about this hearing?
Who's that?
105, 101, 112, 120, 124.
Yes, they certainly were. They are with, definitely within 200 feet.
Just to clarify, their request is just eliminate the buffers altogether, there's zero buffer.
Basically, to honor the existing arrangement of buildings and allow for light industrial manufacturing.
With the contiguous ones that he has, those four, they come up to that industrial ones at the bottom, but what about the one on the top?
They didn't care enough to be here, they were notified.
This one right here?
No.
Are you?
101, 105, 112, 120, 124.
Yeah, those. That is a B3 lot.
Correct, and, and they, they were notified and actually, I believe that up until very recently, Mr. Kersey actually owned that property as well.
Yeah, it just sold. And they're aware that they're, they probably need to have it rezoned. They're probably going to be back in here wanting to rezone it industrial as well.
Okay. So his variance is going to be so that he doesn't have any setback or any buffer?
Essentially, yes.
So it'll make from Commercial Court all the way through to Old Augusta Road will be industrial.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I'm going to call for a motion then. Can somebody put that in words? Oh, Mr. Greg House.
How you doing?
Good.
How are you?
Good, good. We are, we did get notice and we're over in the blue across the street and I'm, I'm all for it, don't have any objections.
You're going to come back next month, get industrial zoning?
Let me ask you a question, Mr. Kersey, what's going to happen to Savannah powder coating? Because I have a lot of stuff powder coated there.
They're going to stay. Yeah, we just have some tenants that want to operate some CNC machines. They want to, and they can't do that, they can't get their business license the way it's on now.
Understood. As long as you don't move the Savannah powder coat.
No, they're not going anywhere.
Alright, so who's going to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for approval by Mr. Zipper, do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a second by Mr. Ryan Thompson, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alan. Alan, did you shave your beard off?
I'm actually his son, Brian Kersey.
Oh, you're Brian.
I'm Joseph Kersey as well. He couldn't be here.
Oh, because I know Alan Kersey and I was thinking, gee, I don't know you without a beard.
He got a lot younger, didn't he?
He got a heck of a lot younger. Say hello to your mom and dad for me.
I sure will, thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Oleg Mitnik requests to rezone 5.8 acres from B3 to I1 to unify zoning with two parcels located of Commercial Court, that's in the 5th district. Is Oleg here? Does Mr. Oleg have some kind of container yard where he puts cars in and seeps them overseas?
I want to say.
Yeah, that's that, that Russian group over there?
Yeah. And he's not here this evening. Katie, you know anything about this?
So again, this is, this is to rezone that 5.8 acres to, from B3 to I1, again, it's unifying zoning. The 5.3 acres that they want to make industrial is wetlands and is actually at this point unbuildable due to the wetlands. They are, again, just trying to unify the zoning. With that being said, in 2020, when that 21.96 acres was rezoned to I1. It was to bring car export there. That being said, the, again, it's just to unify the zoning, they're not trying to, you know, move different from what that initial I1 is for, so.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience?
I guess just like, why? They just wanted to unify it, just to clean it up from a standpoint of not having multiple zonings in one parcel?
Yes, sir. So our GIS was showing this as split because it was B3 next to the, the I1. They had.
You don't have to speak for them if they're not here to speak.
No, no, that's fine. No plat was recorded showing the division of the B3 and I1, so yeah, it is just to kind of clean up the zoning there.
If you look towards the, the back of that section of your binder, you'll see outlined how there was a strip excluded from the original rezoning of the three parcels. So that, that was their intention to leave the, I believe it's six or so acres as B3 in the wetlands. I, I don't recall why. But as Chelsea said, there was never a plat recorded, so the entirety of that area got put down as split zoning, which is not very helpful.
Alright, I'll call for a motion.
We already heard from the audience, there was nobody?
Nobody from the audience came forward? I'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Mr. Smith, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second from Mr. Thompson, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Next item on this evening's agenda is item 15. Statue Investments as agent for Joy Pulte et al. requests to rezone 130.58 acres from AR1 to I1 to allow for the development of industrial warehouses located on Old Augusta Road. This is the 5th district. Is Statue Investments here? I recognize this gentleman.
Good evening, my name is Chance.
Before we start, I need to step down from this one and the next.
You're going to recuse yourself for the next two, 15 and 16. Let the record show that Ryan Thompson is recusing themselves for hearing, on public hearing 15 and 16. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Chance Ryan with Chesterfield LLC.
Good chance. This has been an ongoing project, hasn't it?
This is our second time before you, yes.
Well, I know you've made some concessions in the past and I think you were acquiring some adjacent property for a egress?
Correct.
Ingress egress?
Do we, do we want to let staff present again?
Yeah, would you like to present?
Or do we want, you want us to just go ahead?
So I'm sure it'll be covered, but this was, this was withdrew earlier, an application that was withdrew earlier. They, they have come back now with, you'll see, proposed access to Old Augusta Road. And, and future parcels that, that are now obtained. The DRI report is in your, your packet there, so you do have that. And again, it's just, it's a new application showing the new parcels that they have received.
So as Chelsea said, we, we were before you originally with, with two parcels that showed access to Abercorn Road. And literally days before our first appearance, we were able to get under contract two of the residential parcels on Old Augusta. And unfortunately, we didn't have time to revise the plan and, and also submit those two parcels and those PIN numbers for, for rezoning. So we, we withdrew and, and to add those two parcels, to add access to Old Augusta Road. And actually, since that first meeting, we were able to, to put under contract three more parcels along Old Augusta Road. So we currently have five parcels under contract along Old Augusta.
I see them.
And, and so we have proposed our, our access directly to Old Augusta Road now and, and not on Abercorn Road.
Yeah, that was a real stickler coming in on Abercorn Road with those trucks and. That was a really good move.
Agreed, and that's, that's why we, that's why we, we tried to acquire those first two and, and unfortunately, just a little bit too late to, you know, for the first meeting.
Yeah. Well, I think that, that whole quadrant down there is going to become industrial and I think those residents realize that and they were smart to take your, up your offer. So is there anyone from the audience that wants to speak for or against this petition?
Hi. I'm Cindy House and I will be here next meeting, y'all's next meeting, and I'm going to be presenting the rest of them to Abercorn Road, except the one on the very corner as industrial. So I'm in favor.
So Cindy, you're going to be presenting item 16 on tonight's agenda?
No.
Oh, next month?
It'll be next month.
Pardon me, okay.
And it'll be the ones that are outlined in blue right there, it'll be all of those.
Okay.
As zone industrial.
I got you. Okay. So you're for this petition?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions, Alan or Brad?
Yeah, so the buffer that we're looking for is just going to be on the properties that's on the lower side of the map, the big color map we have. Since, well, I guess the other ones too, but they're going to be industrial next month if that gets, if that gets approved. About the part of the map.
Are you asking your staff?
Right there, Katie, the, so next month, we're probably going to hear the upper properties on that map for industrial and.
Right, I'm, I'm rezoning it for the owners because everything around them is zoned industrial.
So really, the properties that we're going to be most concerned with is the ones on the lower part of the map, I think it's AR1 and AR2?
Correct.
That is, that is correct, because of course, next month, this house is indeed representing submitted.
And y'all, y'all showing a 150 foot buffer. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Ask you a question, they'll cut you off, just like a man.
We have accepted an application for these seven parcels. So if those were approved for rezoning, obviously, that would have the ability to impact buffering and burms that are happening right here.
Alright.
So correct, the, the southern properties zoned to AR1 and AR2, we propose 150 foot buffer with a 20 foot berm within that 150 foot buffer. The properties directly to the south of us are zoned I1, that's SD's Trucking, it's an existing facility, and then the, the property owned by Exeter. Property to the east, although it's zoned AR, one of the properties is owned by the city of Savannah for their municipal water system and intake. And then further to the south and east, it's owned by, their wetlands owned by the state of Georgia. So we've proposed a 25 foot buffer against those two parcels since they're either industrial route, industrial use or, are completely in wetlands.
Y'all were able to get two more warehouses in there with the other property purchase?
We squeezed one in there yesterday.
Looks good.
What is the?
Which one you should?
What's the buffer between I1 and I1?
Nothing.
30?
Nothing.
Nothing? Okay.
Nothing.
Okay, so the properties to the south up against Old Augusta Road, those are still residential there.
Yeah.
And that's where, there's 150 foot with a bump, with a berm.
20 foot berm.
Okay, good. Okay, I mean, Mr. Chance has done everything we've asked him to do. Alright, any other concerns or questions? Brian?
No, good.
I'm going to call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve with staff recommendations.
I got a motion for approval by Mr. Zipper with staff recommendations, do I have a second?
Yeah, sure.
I see. Got a second from Brad Smith. All in favor? Motion carries by all. Motion carries by all. Item number sixteen is Statue Investments as agent for Joy Pulte et al. Requested variance to reduce required buffers between industrial and non-industrial parcels to allow for the development of industrial warehouses located on Old Augusta Road, um, zoned AR one. Proposed zoning is I one. It's in the fifth district. And I guess Chance, you're here to speak on that.
Yes, sir.
So, I thought that we just talked about the buffers from I one to I one.
I just brought it up because I knew it was the same thing. It all at once.
So, I'm assuming if the properties above us get zoned industrial, uh, as we've done before on past projects, uh, within the county, uh, even though we show a hundred and fifty feet up there now, when they get rezoned, that it, it automatically, uh,
I would assume.
It goes away.
Would, would be terminated.
I would assume it would vanish.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so with that understanding, I'm going to call for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval. Do I have a second? A second by Brad Smith. All in favor? All right, motion carries by all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chance for going through all that afterwards. With that said, I'm going to, um, close the meeting, so meeting adjourned. Yeah.